Good morning. Today is May 6, 2015. It is now 10 o'clock in the morning. Call to order, Mr. Eldon Callan.
Here.
Mr. Ed Hawkins.
Here.
And myself. Great, if I'd ask for a stand, Raj, for a moment of silent meditation and a pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep it. We have consents and approvals?
It came from last week when the commission didn't meet. There were vouchers to be approved, which I went ahead and did those with your permission. I'd like to read those into the record. General County Fund, $47,153.94. General County Fund Purchasing Card, $22,273.15. Cole Severance Fund, $199.50. Camp Muffley, $13.75. Chestnut Ridge Park, $2,076.44. Chestnut Ridge Purchasing Card, $1,001.5303. Mason Dixon Park, $28.24. Assessors Valuation Fund, $2,018.75. Home Confinement Fund, $6,378.44. 911 Purchasing Card, $218.89. 911 Cash, $1,088.589. For a total of $84,285.02. That's from last week.
Great.
I will move to confirm the prayer approval.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes.
And this week so far, there are some additional exonerations coming in now. There are on this set, 19 listings, $7,338.83 for tax years 13 and 14. We have the orders of May 6. Finish your orders. Statement of services for George Armistead and Cynthia von Stafford. And as a separate matter, you'll be addressing the objections to the Oscar Schubert estate. You can do that in a separate motion. Minutes of April 15, '21 and '22. Vouchers, General County Fund, $171,143.52. General County Purchasing Card, $44,192.38. Cole Severance Fund, $7,531.62. Cole Severance Purchasing Card, $1,008.59. Camp Muffley, $1,008.31.17. Camp Muffley Purchasing Card, $4,968.88. Chestnut Ridge Park, $2,019.93. Chestnut Ridge Purchasing Card, $1,006.31. Mason Dixon Park, $9,636.3. Mason Dixon Purchasing Card, $48. Assessors Valuation Fund, $90. Assessors Valuation Purchasing Card, $168.20. Magistrate Court Purchasing Card, $48. 911 Purchasing Card, $222.04. 911 Cash, $235.90. Law Enforcement Forfeiture, $1,001.5620. For a total of $233,012.78.
Move to approve.
Second. Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Now, we do need to discuss the objection filed regarding final settlement estate of Oscar Schubert. But I'm going to ask if we could just move down to item number six so that those people do not have to stay. It's just introduction of new employees for U Services. And if you could do that, then that way you don't have to stay and we can get you. Are the people here?
Sarah Abel is here for a part-time person.
Okay.
But I don't believe U Services is here yet.
She may have not have.
Okay, we can just Sarah.
We're about 10 minutes.
Oh, okay, then we'll hold off.
Well, this is Sarah. She has a part-time person.
Oh, oh, okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is Tyler Anderson.
Yes.
We're from the Dairy Report Center. I'm the director. And he started on Friday as a new part-time person. He's going to be working about 20 hours a week. So, that's good. Hopefully, he'll stick around for a while.
No benefits with part-time?
No, no benefits.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We have a big question, though. How's the football team looking for next year? Let's talk priorities.
That's good priority to talk.
I told him that you'd crack it up.
Yeah, I'd have to ask that question. How's it looking?
Very good.
Yeah, defense looks stronger this year.
They're going to be very good.
Well, and I'll tell you, you also played well and you also, once you say you represented Morgantown and the community very well, so we appreciate that. So, welcome.
Welcome, Moore.
Thank you.
Thanks, uh.
Okay, was there anyone else, new employees? Or it's...
Um...
Yeah, she's...
Yes.
Hey, come on. We're going to do it early, so that way you don't have to stay.
Oh, okay, good. I'm the director of Montanaian Services, Nancy Zeke, and this is our new employee upon approval, Kelly Moore. She has an extensive background in working with adolescents and she has a good, solid work ethic.
What's her position in...
Uh, U Crisis Worker.
In full-time?
Full-time.
When did she start?
This weekend, upon approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, it's been approved and we wish you the best of luck. You have two of the three members on the board who are very involved with U Services, so we thank you for your service and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, now we can go back.
I've just received additional exonerations.
Okay.
Nine listings, $11,238.14 for tax years 13 and 14. Add those to the approval.
I gotta make sure I'm not in here before I move to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No cousins either?
Probably cousins in here, no doubt.
Okay, now, to get clarification, we have two objections filed regarding the final settlement estate of Oscar Schubert. Are the two parties here, and if so, if they could just... The party that is requesting the objection, are they here? Are the parties who's fighting the objection?
Yes.
And could you state your name, address, and if you want to give a...
Sure.
Couple minutes to explain, you're more than welcome to.
Yes, I'm Sandra Desborough. I'm an attorney from, originally from Morgantown, but I'm in Elkins right now. My address is 95 Elm Street, it's 95-C Elm Street, Elkins, West Virginia.
Okay.
We're not related, but I've known her since.
Yeah, forever.
Well, she's not from Preston County, so what do you...
A lot of people from Preston County. Actually, my oldest friend that grew up here with me was from Preston County. Okay. Do you want me just present, just present...
Yes, but the two objections, the two rebuttals to the objection.
Okay, the first argument was, first of all, the 10%, which was stipulated in the decedent's will. And also that, and first of all, I did research when the decedent's wife had passed, which had exactly the same percentage in her will, and I could find nothing that could, that... No case law or even discussion about overturning the designation by the decedent in their will. So, I would ask that this one objection be denied. The second part of that was that because there was the, there were two deceivants and they died within two months of each other, that it would be excessive to have a fee on the second one, since it had already, a lot of the same property was in the first one. However, I again went to a bunch of senior attorneys, because I'm really a Navy Marine Corps attorney and I've, I done to a lot of estates. And everyone I talked to said, yes, it does seem like maybe like double dipping, but that's the way it is. You finish the first estate and then you go to the second estate. So, I would ask that both of these be denied accordingly. Then the second, those were all in one objection, but two parts. The second one was that the decedent, prior to his death, after his will had been written several years before, and most wills do say that, you know, pay my funeral expenses from my, the proceeds of my estate. However, Mr. Schubert put, assigned, one of his insurance policies that was through Mutual, Northwest Mutual Life Insurance Company, to Hastings Funeral Home in a pre-needs trust, which was filed with the Attorney General's Office January 15, 2010. And that would have been enough money to have paid his funeral expenses. However, the moment the decedent, Mr. Schubert, died, one of the three heirs, who had been the previous beneficiaries to the, to this policy, went to Northwest Mutual and demanded his third. And contrary to the normal law, they gave it to him. Now, we tried over and over to get Northwest Mutual to talk with us, to discuss why they did it, you know, and so forth. They wouldn't even return phone calls. So, we felt that, we had two alternatives. One was to subtract that amount, the third that he got illegally from his share of the assets. The other would be to file suit against Mr. Schubert, Gary Schubert, and the Northwest Mutual. Well, that would have depleted any monies left. So, actually, Mr. Gary Schubert, who filed these complaints, is actually getting more money than if we had taken the second route. So, my feeling is, you know, that the decedent was very clear that this was to pay for his funeral expenses. It was, you know, properly filed and, and the funeral home had, not funeral home, the insurance company had ample notice, and yet they still disallowed it. So, I feel that this was, and the fiduciaries, the co-executors felt that this was in the best interest of the estate to handle it this way. So, I again say that this should be denied.
Okay. Does either commissioner have any questions before we discuss it with the lawyer?
Just so I'm clear, the Northwestern Mutual gave proceeds from the policy directly to Mr. Schubert.
Yes.
Those proceeds were earmarked specifically to pay funeral costs.
Exactly. They were in a pre-needs trust.
So, by deducting the one-third portion, it's one-third, right?
Right.
The one-third portion from Mr. Schubert's portion of what he's already taken, you've equalized.
Right, so that all the heirs are equal and the decedent's desires were fulfilled.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Basically, we have, let's go, let's do it this way. We have two objections, and let's first clarify. Is there objection be denied, or how did you want to deal with objection number one?
Well, first just ask if there's any, why don't we just ask if there's any question, any further discussion?
Okay, is there any further discussion on this?
I have to...
Okay, see...
I would just make motions if...
Go ahead, that'd be fine, that would resolve.
I would, I would, I understand their argument, that their argument, the five, the 5% that is typical in the estates is what's set by a court as being typical. A decedent can do with their money whatever they want to, and if they want to pay 10%, they can pay 10%. So, I move that we deny the objection on the 10%.
I agree in second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes, okay. Second motion?
This is a situation that either you waste the estate's money suing them, or, on the other hand, you equalize and do what you think the intent of the attester was, which is obvious that the intent was that everyone share equally in the assignment. So, by doing it this way, if he's got a problem, he's going to have to sue you and spend his money instead of isoversion. So, I believe that since that was the testator's intent was to pay the funeral expenses from that policy, and for whatever reason, Northwestern decided not to pay attention to that, that we ignore that and do what is justice, justifiable and equitable in that all heirs receive an equal amount, equal share of the estate. So, I move that we deny the second objection.
I again agree in second.
Been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? I just want to personally compliment you, because we've, the three of us have been here and have watched the opposite, where they've used hundreds of thousands of dollars to fight arguments, and I really think you did what was in the best interest of it. So, I call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Okay, we now have both objections denied, so do we have a motion of...
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
We all asked also, I don't know if it's within your power to grant the attorney's fees for having to have to counter this, since they've both been denied.
It's part of the, if we approve the final settlement and attorney fees are in the settlement, it's approved, it will be approved.
Well, they aren't, these courts, the settlement was already filed earlier, so they weren't in there, so...
You want to, you want to adjust them? You want to adjust the final settlement?
I guess, all the funds have already been paid out, so I think we'll just go with it as it is and let the executors decide if they want to pay me or not.
Okay.
I saved them today.
That's your, it's just whether you want to make an amendment or not.
Yeah.
If you'd rather just...
We'd rather get the estate closed, it's been dragging on way too long.
I move we approve final settlement. We stay in.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it is now accepted.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, really appreciate what you did.
Okay.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you, too.
Ready for football?
Of course.
Okay, at this time, we have comments from the public. I ask that you just stand, state your name, address, and you're more than welcome to speak on any issue. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Sure.
I would like to speak. I'm Nancy Gans. I also happen to be on Morgantown City Council. My personal address is 1276 Colonial Drive, Morgantown, 26505. I would like to speak to the issue that was brought forward to you all in March by Mr. Papandreas. What happened at the time is he had a 31-minute complaint that was aired that, of gerrymandering and misconduct by myself and another city council person. After that was read to you, you forwarded it to Marsha Ashdown. I just want to say, prior to that, almost a year prior to that, we had received a statement from the Ethics Commission that was appropriate to do, to vote how we were voting and to realign the words and boundaries according to the state and county redistricting that had already taken place. Knowing that, we had asked for the Ethics Commission's decision, which appeared, which was available almost a year before this complaint came to you. So, when it was sent to the prosecutor, the information was already known that we were acting in good faith. So, I just want to mention that. I also want to mention that I want to put this behind us, because it absolutely went viral, and I personally would like to put this behind us with the facts. So, what I'd like to do is read the facts to you of Marsha Ashdown's, since it's been two meetings you've had and the facts have not been read from Marsha Ashdown, I would like to read them into the record, if I can.
Sure.
Also, I just want to mention one more thing before I read them to the record. This is an issue, and I understand why it happened. And the Legislators Magazine says, "Preventing frivolous unfounded ethics complaints, especially during election season, keeps politics out of the process." So, we had, I just want to say that I had asked the Ethics Commission about this over a year before the election, to prevent frivolous complaints and to prevent the power of accusations from occurring. In fact, in our state, we restrict ethic commissions from accepting or initiating complaints six days before and after a primary general election. So, this was clearly, from my perspective, as you can hear, political theater. So, I will read the answer from Marsha Ashdown, and I just want to say that in doing this, I want to put to bed the accusations, so we can move forward in a positive light, as we've worked on, in a positive light for the last several years, anyway. In this, I received from my attorney by Freedom of Information Act, not my attorney, the city attorney, and it was furnished to you all and to the complainant, Mr. Papandreas, April 3. So, it's, there's been two meetings since this has been furnished, to you and to him.
Look, I haven't been here too many days.
Well, I'm just saying.
Not if it's been here...
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, go ahead.
No, I just want to read it to the, it's nothing, this is not personal.
Oh, I know.
I just want to read it.
Well, I just want to clear it. You said, you said three times, it's been two meetings, we haven't done anything.
You haven't had two meetings?
No, we have not.
Oh, okay, my mistake, my mistake.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, 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 please. I just want to clear the air, so we can all move forward together.
That's fine, it's just you kept saying the same thing, wrong thing, over and over.
Okay, sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Well, the wrong thing was said in this room over and over again by another party, and I want to clear the air. And it's, your complaint regarding Word and Boundary Commission, Morgantown/Morgantown City Council, Dear Mr. Papandreas and its CC to you all. I have received the materials you submitted to me, which were forwarded to me by the Mon County Commissioners, following your appearance at the Mon County Commission meeting in March. In the course of considering your accusations against various city council members and Ward Boundary Commission member, I reviewed portions of the Morgantown City Charter, an opinion letter issued by the West Virginia Ethics Commission, that's the one I'm referring to a year ago, March. An opinion by former city attorney Stephen Fannick with the West Virginia Supreme Court case, Mr. Fannick was asked to review for the Word and Boundary Commission in West Virginia Code, and that was in November. For the reasons set herein, it is my opinion that the matters of which you complain do not constitute malfeasance in office, which would generate a charge under West Virginia Code 6-6-7B23. The code's section authorized the prosecuting attorney and/or other persons and entities to prefer charges for official misconduct, malfeasance in office, incompetence, neglect of duty, and gross immorality. As several of those terms are defined in 6-6-1, I cannot conclude that the actions of the individuals whom you have identified would constitute malfeasance in office, as you've asserted. The Morgantown City Charter itself allows city council to approve or disapprove the recommendations of the Ward Boundary Commission. The Charter requires reasons to be specified for disapproval of recommendations. A review of the transcript of December 2, 2014, regularly scheduled city council meeting reflects that the Ward Boundary report was vigorously, even hotly debated, followed by a vote by city council members for, to disapprove the report and three, to approve. The transcript shows that each of the disapproving council members articulated on the record his or her reasons for disapproval. I will note that mine were related to the district, the boundaries set forward by the county. As to the propriety of Jenny Celine and Nancy Gans voting on Ward and Boundary issues as councilpersons, who in the future term of office could be affected, I have seen, as you most likely have seen, the March 6, 2014 Advisory Opinion 2014-10 from the West Virginia Ethics Commission. The opinion by the acting chairperson of the Ethics Commission held that it was not a conflict of interest or other ethical problem for city council members to vote on Ward Boundary questions under the circumstances you have described, in which are apparent in transcripts, minutes, and other documentation. The Ethics Opinion states in closing that it has presidential effect and may be relied upon in good faith by public servants. Former city attorney Stephen Fannick provided a written opinion to the members of the Ward Boundary Commission dated November 18, 2014, which he addressed the question of whether the state of West Virginia actually, Cooper v. Tennant cited as 22-9 West Virginia 585 2012, had any effect or guidance on the method of establishing Ward Boundaries as set forth in the City Charter. The Cooper versus Tennant case resulted in a very lengthy opinion, 80-some pages, by the West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals, ultimately finding that allegations of partisan gerrymandering by the West Virginia Legislature did not constitute equal protection violations of the West Virginia State Constitution. Mr. Fannick's review of the Thornton v. Cooper opinion further distanced the context of that case from the city council's decision as to words and boundaries, because city council elections are nonpartisan, every council seat is an at-large election, meaning that every qualified voter within the city of Morgantown has the right to vote for a council member for each of the seven wards of the city. Therefore, as stated by Mr. Fannick, there are no issues for city council, either equal representation violations or gerrymandering. I agree with Mr. Fannick. I further note, as stated in Cooper v. Tennant Supra, which involved partisan gerrymandering, the West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals stated gerrymandering IR and EF itself is not unconstitutional and has clearly been deemed acceptable on legislative redistricting decisions. In your email to me of Sunday, March 29, 2015, you stated the West Virginia Secretary of State's office indicated that this gerrymandering is probable violation of federal election law also. I have inquired of individuals in the Office of Secretary of State who advised me that such an opinion was not and would not have been rendered. Perhaps there was a misunderstanding. For these reasons, I cannot find that your complaint supports a charge of malfeasance in office, and I conclude that this is a political matter in which my office may not involve itself. Thank you for your concerns and interest in these matters. Sincerely, Marsha Ashdown, prosecuting attorney.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes, if you'd all right. I'm Bill Kuecking, 324 Coben Avenue. I am also the second ward councilperson, city of Morgantown. I just want to thank Nancy for her presentation. I also want to reiterate that our intention here as council is to come to you and tell you that we're looking to cooperate with you as much as we can. We hope to work with you in a positive manner and move this city and this county forward. So, we're looking, again, to put this behind us with a contentious election. We're happy to have it over. We look forward to what we can do that will improve our region. And again, we look forward to working with you in a positive manner. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Quirky. Is there any others who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, public comments are closed. Did you want to be spoke?
I just wanted to congratulate both of you on your reelection. I think this commission, since I've been on it, has been dedicated to work closely with the other government entities and try to save taxpayers' money, because we're all here to represent the taxpayers and our citizens. So, I just want to, all I was trying to do was explain that we have not been in session since this letter came out, so that's all. But I appreciate you presenting it, because it was the proper way to handle it. So, I commend you for that. You commend, you handle it. Hopefully, it's behind us. We tried to, we tried to, we tried to keep our distance from it by just passing it on to the prosecutor and saying we don't take, we're out of it, so... But I do congratulate you, and I know that this commission, as prior commissions, is very committed to work with all the government entities at all levels, not only the city of Morgantown, but the other cities and the other entities that exist throughout the county. So, thank you for your presentation.
Do you want to? I do want to congratulate you on your election, but I do want to clarify. You mentioned the ethics ruling. One of the questions that, if you look at the meeting that was asked, was, the comment made by the presenter was that the city clerk, quote, "did not have all the information, it was only given one-sided." This information, what he was giving was, he felt more information. So, therefore, he felt that that ethics, didn't have all the information that the city clerk gave. That was one of the questions we asked, but we referred it as we were required to do. So, I just want to get a clarification on that. That was specifically asked and addressed. Thank you. Okay, grant reimbursements.
I do have one emergency solutions grant. It's for April 2015, and the amount is $20,048.85.
Move to approve, second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes. Do we need to sign that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we did introduction. Okay, bid, we're past 10:20, good. Bid opening for roof at Nurses Residence Health Departments. And how many bids do we have?
Two.
I'll let the two young men to my either side will do it. Don't trust me with a knife.
All right, yeah, that's fine. Don't want you to slip.
Yeah. Did I get that application? Let's make sure. Could either one like to, go ahead.
This bid is from Tri-State Roofing and Chic Metal, in the amount of $94,333, to take approximately 30 days on-site to complete the project.
Okay.
Starting possibly of May 26, estimated starting date.
Okay.
Okay, this is NF Mansueto and Sons, 20, 20 thou, excuse me, $70,225. Estimated number of calendar days is 20 days. They can start 20 days from receiving the notice to proceed. The license, bonding, information, and liability insurance coverage is all included in the packet. packet. I'd move that we refer these bids to our facilities director, Mr. Doyle, and have him review and come back with the recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Public hearing for MAP amendments. It is, we're one minute away.
Thirty.
Okay, it's ten-twenty-nine.
Let me take this one.
Okay. I will wait the one minute instead of starting something else, so that way, uh, we can move on. The executive session we will hold at the end of the meeting. Okay, it's now ten-thirty. Public hearing now for MAP amendments. Uh, what did you want to explain?
Yes.
Short, very Cliff Notes version.
Okay. Uh, basically, we have two MAP amendments, as you're aware. Uh, it's a two-step process. There's a public hearing before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation of this body, but since the MAP is part of the ordinance, it's an amendment to the ordinance, so it takes your first reading, second reading, and a public hearing in order to amend the MAP amendment. The first one we have here, in both cases, you've received the application, you've received the staff report, you've received a resolution from the Planning Commission. Again, in both cases, they recommended approval, uh, and then you should have a copy of a resolution for you to adopt if you so decide.
We have a MAP. I've requested MAPs in the past.
Yes.
Are you going to deal with the zero-zero-one, two thousand fifteen first?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll take them in order.
Thank you.
And, now, putting it towards me doesn't do.
Go ahead.
This one is fairly easy because it's this area right in the middle of the farm.
Oh, okay.
Is there a range here?
Mm-huh. Point Marion, right close to intersection with, uh, Stewartstown and Point Marion Road.
Okay. Where's the other one lying down here?
The other one is over here, uh, on, um...
Oh, this area, this is one we've been here before.
Right. And came into a work session with you.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. As far as it goes, uh, you, what the request is, is to go from R-one to R-two. Both are single-family with possibility of duplex, so we're not talking multi-family here. There is a slight increase in density due to the fact you can have smaller lots. In general, the R-one was sort of conceived as someplace where if you didn't have onsite water and sewer, you would have bigger lots and could do that. Uh, with the development that's going to go on here, um, they'll have onsite water and sewer, there'll also be improvements to the road. At least, that's the plan, obviously. As with all rezonings, once it's rezoned, it's rezoned, so we can't guarantee what will happen in the land use phase, but the developer's been working with the planning office for probably four or five years almost on this one. Um, we looked at development under the R-one guidelines, and it just, it wasn't very feasible. Every single lot would have to have multiple variances to be able to do the project. So, the idea was to rezone it from R-one to R-two, that gives some flexibility on size of lots and bulk requirements, and it was the recommendation of staff and approved by the Planning Commission that it be rezoned from R-one to R-two.
Okay.
We also have not received any comments since the Planning Commission hearing on this, so no comments received for the public hearing.
Were there many comments during your session?
The, uh, we didn't receive a whole lot of comments, but we did have, at the public hearing, there were a number of people from the surrounding developments that were concerned about, uh, traffic. The traffic problem was not so much coming out of this proposed, uh, rezoned area, but the intersection out at Stewartstown Road and Point Marion Road. And what I, oh, it's a horrible intersection, but what I explained is, under our ordinance, we can ensure that there's adequate roads and water and sewer in this development, but there's nothing in our ordinance that makes Department of Highways fix the mess out on Stewartstown Road and Point Marion.
If there was, we would be using it, I guarantee. If there was some way to make them fix it, with all the problems around.
Any questions?
No, that, that's pretty simple.
We can open to public, this is public hearing, so if anyone else wants to speak to it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak directly on this issue? Yes.
Zero-zero-one, two-zero-fifteen.
Yes.
Unusual that I'm here is the, where I am, um, but, uh, I'm close enough to see the MAP. And if you know, um, last night at City Council, we received from the Economic Development Department.
Department.
Thank you. I need help. Uh, muddies, um, as well as from the National Guard, a commitment to expand the runway. This is in the runway zone, this property he's talking about, and there's in that area that's called the flyway. And there are cer- and we are seeking muddies from WVU to expand at a certain number of feet. In the FAA guidelines, which I am not an expert on, by the way, I, um, I noted that there's a density, um, a density requirement in the zoning under an expansion of a runway. Now, by the way, I'm not prepared to speak on this subject, and I...
I just wanted to, I just wanted to figure out where, where, where it is.
What it is is, um, the picture I saw was like this. Um, it was like a pie shake because what...
Well, let's ask Rich Wood, is, is there, oh, there, I'm sorry. Is there, is it in the runway or the area?
I have not seen the proposed one, especially since the expansion. I know that the developments along, um, the mile ground and Easton Hill, uh, the commercial development here, the high-density development here, and the development back here are in that. I'm not sure that it goes this far out that way, but I have never, I've never actually seen that.
What there is is a picture.
We have an advantage here, yeah.
Yeah. What there is is a picture.
I, I thought, I thought the runway extension was on the East Bay sixty-eighth side.
It is, it is, but to accommodate, yeah, you're exactly correct, but to accommodate, um, different weather patterns, there is a cone that's put around it, and I, I don't know the safety zone cone, and I would just question that question.
Okay, well, no, that's a good question. I think things be looked at.
I do know that they need a bigger one where the planes come in to land than they need to take off. That much was established.
We could find out that, I think that's a legitimate question that should be looked at. Yeah. Yes, sir. If you state your name.
Yeah, my name's Scott Cogan. I'm with Chief Road Engineering. I'm the engineer representing Fertelli Properties on the, on this subject property. Um, I'm not exactly sure, I guess what, I guess it would be the flight path is what you're speaking to, Nancy.
Yes, thank you.
Um, yeah, so I can see that that possibly could be within the flight path, but generally the way that FAA, uh, works, uh, they're concerned about highest points, you know, obviously obstructions. Uh, this particular property's invalid. Um, again, you had to fly over top of this property and then all of Marion Meadows, which is several feet higher in elevation than this property is. Um, so, this, there's no conceivable way that I can see that this could be any type of obstruction, uh, or any type of issue with flight paths, uh, coming in. Um, no, it could be in the flight path.
I mean, but maybe not. I'm not sure.
No, I, I know what you're saying, but it, this, this property sits well below everything else. Like I said, all the houses on Marion Meadows and everything are going to be, uh, you know, they're also in that flight path.
They are higher.
You know, and there's, there's a lot of things in the flight path of planes. You know, I live in Hazelton, and planes fly through my house, but, um, so I don't really think that, uh, from a, uh, from a standpoint of the runway extension, that this property could ever be, uh, conceived to be an impediment to that, to that extension.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioners, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um, that, I was actually Joe Kahler, I'm sorry. Um, I'm on the Planning Commission, and that actually did come up.
Vice President.
Congratulations, Vice President.
Thank you. That, that same, it did come up because Joe Kahler and I had a side conversation about that because we knew this extension was going through. It's going from R-one to R-two, which is still going to be residential homes, so height isn't going to be, you're not talking about a four-story apartment building or something like that. And that was part of our conversation that came up.
So, you've already discussed that and dealt with that.
Yes, sir.
It's a legitimate question that should have been, yeah.
Absolutely. And, and again, it's true.
Sounds to me like they have dealt with it.
Yeah.
It, it's in a lower area, which it would almost be, you'd almost have to put up a very large building for it to be an impediment to what they're proposing.
Now, put up a large building just to reach Marion Meadows.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, good. Any other comments on that particular? Okay. Do you want to talk on the second issue?
Uh, I guess it can be combined, I'm not sure. Usually...
Well, okay, well, we could, okay, we'll do each one.
We could close the public hearing.
Sure.
You want to close the public hearing?
I'll close the public hearing on the first.
Would you prefer, Rich, we close the, the public hearing?
Sure.
Uh, just to ask one more time, is there any more comment on that one?
Is there anyone else who wants to discuss this? Seeing none?
Let's close the public hearing.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move second.
Some properly moved in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we're going to open up the second.
Second public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. Um, this is, as was pointed out previously, this is one that has come before this body before, although there was some different makeup of the commission at that point in time. Uh, if you look at the map and you have a, uh, insert in the staff report, it's basically a single-family residential area surrounded almost in total by high-density residential. I think the thought was that this was an area with, with a single-family house, although it had several apartments on it, that they wanted to kind of preserve that for the individual owner, uh, but it's actually working to their detriment at this point in time. Um, it may have been good intention to try and reduce the density, but basically, in this area, the horse was well out of the barn at this point in time. The Planning Commission recommended, uh, approval, uh, to this body the first time, recommends approval to this body the second time. As I recall, at the public hearing before this body, the, the kind of recommendation is, well, we won't go R-four, we'll go R-three. Well, unfortunately, that isn't an option. You either approve what was presented or you reject it. There isn't a way to sort of negotiate. Um, and, um, uh, we, again, we have not received any further comments between the public, the Planning Commission meeting and your public hearing. Any questions?
It also got bogged down with another part, another area that was not even near this area, which I had to recuse myself from, that, that I sort of got withdrawn out of this one too, and I have no reason to recuse myself from this one.
Yeah. There was, uh, there's no question that there was, uh, a number of individuals here who weren't specifically opposed to this one, were opposed to the other, but were in general opposed to any increase in density here.
No, they didn't want anything changed.
Right. That's correct.
Anything changed anywhere, and it sort of got out of hand.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this, during this public hearing?
I will.
Sure. If you state your name and address.
Mark Zalera, four-one-zero-five, Sunset Lane.
Okay.
We're a party, uh, part owners of the property in question, and we're only asking to have the same rights as the surrounding properties, and, uh, at some point in time, uh, we may develop it, uh, or try to, but, uh, at this point in time, it's hurting the neighbor, which is right next to us because he's trying to sell his property, and I think it'd be beneficial to everybody.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak?
My name's Tina Lavelle. I live at one Zalera Drive, Morgantown, West Virginia. I'm a, a party, a part owner as well, and I support the, obviously, the request.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
I'm, I'm the owner of the property.
I remember the...
I just want to mention that I have no objections.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing none, can we?
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Some properly moved in second to close. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes. So, now we have the two things before us.
Okay, yeah. My, my, it's all the advertisements and everything's been done to pass this today, yeah, and that's, that's all been taken care of. I move we, uh, approve, uh, the Planning Commission request for an amendment to the West Run Plan and District Zoning Map, zero-zero-one dash two thousand fifteen.
I second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay.
I move that we approve the request for amendment to the West Run Planning District Zoning Map, zero-zero-two, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. And thank you for, for waiting so long, because I do remember that when we all agreed it shouldn't be R-one, but we had to go through the whole process again, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll hold off on the executive session. Correspondents' requisition for payment number eleven, Canalstone and Triad Engineering from the Tiff Series.
This is for Monview LLC, four million, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from Series, two thousand fourteen B taxable tip bond.
Excuse me, Mark, we missed you up there, buddy.
Huh. I missed you up there. I had, I had other obligations.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to confirm it.
Okay, so we have payment.
I move we approve the, uh, requisition for payment number eleven.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Okay. We have a letter of resignation. Did you want to just state what it was and where it's at?
Uh, this is Holly Gleason. She has been the Superintendent of Chestnut Ridge Park. Uh, she has accepted another position with REIC Labs, and her last day will be in Navy Eight.
Okay.
We have advertised the position.
Great.
You want to move to accept? Move to accept.
Move to accept our resignation.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to accept the resignation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It passes. Is there any other correspondents? I, I received one letter, and I just want to put it in because I said I would mention it. Um, basically, it's from the residents of Harvest Ridge Housing Development are very concerned about the condition of Hornback Road. They've contacted DOH numerous times in past two years and always told that the land developer's out of compliance one way or the other, or they are waiting for the developer. When we contacted developer, we were told that they were waiting for the DOH. Meanwhile, the large construction vehicles continue to destroy what little bit of road that is left. Um, with two hundred houses out there, you can only imagine the number of complaints. They ask for any advice or guidance that this county commission could do. Um, I was wondering if we could just send the letter, just stating that the concern that I could give you this from the residents?
Yeah, I move, uh, so, send the letter, uh, and, uh...
DOH?
To DOH, uh, and, uh, and, and it's about time for, for him, uh, for, um, Mr. Ray, uh, Mr. Erst to come back in.
I've invited him, but he hasn't been available.
Yes.
Well, invite him again, and if I need to call him, let me know. Uh, but we, we need to come back in. We've got a lot of things going on. This is summer building season, so we'd like to talk to him again, so. I'd move we send the letter.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's passed. Uh, just for your information, it's, I am glad you stated that. I can tell you that ten days ago, a meeting was held with, uh, DOH officials and delegates from this community. Um, we were not invited, but, um, they had a meeting, there was a lot...
I wasn't here, but I didn't see an invite either.
No, none of us were invited. Um, basically, there was discussion, I don't know specifically on what. I believe there's now a list out that, again, we haven't been informed of, of the roads, so hopefully, we can maybe look forward to now, meeting with us to, to find out what's going on, but they did meet with a number of the delegate members. That's all I can...
Who, they meet the state people?
Uh, yeah, there was state mayors. Yeah, House of Delegate Center, so I know that happened a week ago Friday. We were not invited.
There is one project that is currently started, right, I think almost immediately, which is the Grapss Road.
Right.
Uh, that is ongoing right now.
And we appreciate that. It's always would have been nice, though, to inform us, and hopefully, we'll get a list, and I believe that's what we'll be able to do, to get a list. My big concern, I will just say, is you have so many people, and I, I believe this is, My big concern, I will just say, is you have so many people, and I, I believe this is, this is one of the concerns I think the three of us are gonna have, that now you're gonna take half of the workers to do the mowing and, you know, and cutting. So now you have half the people doing the potholes and so on. So I look forward to meeting with them and, um, seeing what's going on, so we have a clearer picture of how many people are actually working in the county and what areas they are controlling. So try and make it a positive informational meeting when we call them again. Okay, uh, unfinished business. We have confirm, uh, confirmation of requisition of construction draw Justice Center. In English?
This was requisition number thirteen, uh, to pay Mestero Corporation one million, six hundred fifty-two dollars, one million, six hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars for the, uh, Justice Center project that was approved, so we could get the payment made last week.
Okay.
He told me to.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have something about that issue later on, uh, in the work session. Recycling.
Bobby's fault. Bobby's fault.
Yeah, Bobby's fault. Recycling equipment, um, I, El, uh, Eldon, you were not here. We have, uh, difference of opinion of what we might want to do or not want to do with the equipment. I, that's why I asked to put it back on. There are four pieces of equipment that are sitting out in the, uh, yard. I guess that's the best way. And there was the possibility, and Ed mentioned that there is discussion of an individual who wants to add a new transfer station, and he might be interested in that. The concern is that it could be six or more months, and that's just to get the transfer station, and the concern is then we would have to put out the bid anyway. So I, you know, what I'm, was hoping that, since the Solid Waste Authority made over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, from what I've been told, I don't know what they're doing with that money, but they did make that money. It's in their pockets. What, it would be nice to have this equipment sold, so we could have it in our recycling fund. So that's why I've put it out there to see if there, what your feeling was, since, you know, we have difference. And if you would like to add your side.
Well, in, in as much as I have attended the Solid Waste Authority meeting, they have money that they have to grant back to the state. Okay? So this isn't money that they are hoarding or keeping. They are simply just having to do what they have to do by state code. My feeling is still that I would hold out, that if mains are willing to establish another and second transfer station for competition for Republic and incorporate recycling, that I would not be in favor of selling this equipment. I would be in favor even of giving this equipment to them, rather than selling it, if it encourages real recycling as we had before, voluntary recycling.
And the question, and again, I don't know the legality, is I don't think we could give that equipment.
I, I don't know.
Merely a suggestion.
Oh, I know, I know, I don't know, I believe it would have to put out the bid. And that's the questions we're asking. So since it is, uh, two separate opinions and parts, good, very good opinions on both sides, uh, you were fortunately not here, so now you are here. And so we're wondering whether you have any input into what direction you would like to go.
As the Jeopardy theme goes. I was, uh, I didn't get to read all the papers since I was gone, but I saw one headline about Republic replacing their people, it's about time. I did something, I was, uh, I gotta tell this story. I, uh, and I live in Morgantown. And this is why I've always had trouble with the public, because I had, I, I, with, with entering any sort of agreement, giving them any money, I got real problems with them. And it was about six weeks ago, they came, they picked up my recycling. And when they picked, I just happened to be looking out the back window at the time. When they dumped the, dumped the recycling, a bunch of newspaper fell in the alley. The guy returned the bin, stepped over the paper in the alley, got the truck and drove away. There's probably newspaper blowing, I had to go out and pick up the newspaper blowing down. So I, I called them, uh, I called them and issued a complaint. Supervisor called me back, said, oh, we'll take care of that, we'll deal with that and everything. So they quit picking up my recycling period.
They took care of it.
Two weeks, two weeks in a row, they did not pick up my recycling. So I called back and complained. And I said, what's going on here, why is this going on? And, you know, you know, I hope this is not the way your response is. Guy stepped over newspaper, taking two seconds to bend down and pick it up, newspaper that he dropped, it was inside the bin. Oh, no, no, I'm sure that's not it, but we'll look into it. So they come, and I happened, just a week, couple of weeks ago, whenever it was. They, uh, they, I happened again to be looking out the window, heard them coming, and they picked up my recycling. And when they drove off, I happened to walk away from the window, because I saw them picking up my recycling, and I thought, well, that's, that's taken care of. I come back and I look, somebody's garbage from four streets down was setting in my backyard. A bag of garbage that someone tossed off into my backyard. I says, this, this is nuts. I mean, so I called back and complained last week, I said, what's going on? I says, is this retaliation, what, what are you doing? You don't like that, that I'm calling? And, and mind you, I never tell anyone I'm a commissioner or anything. I'm just an average citizen as far as they know. They don't know who I am, my, my, you know, I'm just one of their customers. I want to make that clear. So I come back from the mountains yesterday, and the last two weeks, they have not picked up my recycling again. I guess I'm getting paid back again. So if you issue a complaint against Republic, don't expect to receive any service. That's, that's the, the, the issue, I think, has a worry with them. I read in the paper.
Hopefully, that's in the past, yeah.
Yeah, apparently, they cleaned house.
Yes, they did.
So, uh, I didn't read the entire article, but.
Yes, they cleaned.
I, I just had to share that story, because we have got so many complaints. And I just, I, I have a major philosophical problem of paying a private entity money to provide a service that should be a service that they're making money off of. I have a problem with that. And that's why I never really liked this Republic relationship. And I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that something else will come about. I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer a third compromise.
Okay.
What I'd like to do, because we have no obligation to sell it. My concern's two-fold. Number one, it seems like every recycling program's in major trouble, from what I, from what I've read. Not just in West Virginia, but throughout the East. I mean, the recycling, uh, as I've said before, i- if, it doesn't matter which bin it goes into, if it's not worth anything, it's garbage. You can put it in the recycling bin and feel good about yourself, but if it's not marketable, if you can't sell it, it's garbage, it's not recycling. It's a, it's a private business. So what I would like to do is, I'm a little concerned with all this recycle equipment on the market, that we would get top dollar for this, and I'd like to get top dollar for anything, you know that. What I, what I would propose is that we go ahead and offer it, or go ahead and get potential bids on it, without any commitment that we'll actually go through the sale. And I would like to wait pending to see if we can get, uh, because if we can use the equipment and, uh, they provide a program, so I'm sort of saying, let's see, if we can get enough money to make it worthwhile and to get the equipment out of the weather, then we can make that decision down the road. So I'm, that's my, that's my third offer, I guess. Let's go ahead and see what we can get out of this equipment, on the one hand. In the meantime, looking for, hoping to help support a new recycling program that's really gonna work.
I would be happy to make the motion that we do that, that we go ahead and put out a bid without action being taken until decision we made after the bid.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, I think it's an excellent compromise. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I think that is an excellent compromise. Let's see what, let's see if it's even worth anything, you know, we have no idea. Okay, is there any other old business?
Let's, do you want to set, uh, say, May twenty, May twenty-seventh as a bid opening? We'll do an advertisement.
Sure.
These items, we'll accept sealed.
Sure.
Uh, bids, quotes.
Right.
The product, and then open them on the twenty-seventh.
Do we need an official motion of that?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
Motion that make May twenty-seventh?
Motion to have May twenty-seventh as the official date.
Second.
Proper move in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes.
What's the date for you?
This is the.
The opening of bids on selling the equipment.
On selling the equipment. Okay. Uh, any other old business? Okay, new business, uh, discussion of purchase of Ventrac mower for Chestnut Ridge Park.
Uh, I put this on the agenda. We, I'm a, I'll have to state that I am a Ventrac owner. I am an enthusiast about this particular machine, uh, not because it's just a mower, but because it has interchangeability of its use, in other words.
Just to make sure, Ed, now, you're, you're owner of the mower, not the company, right?
I have no, I have no, I have nothing in the company, no. But the two parks do have this machine. We also have a machine, uh, that we use for the county. Mostly stone removal and grading and stuff like that, and Bobby can attest to this, they are very useful machines. But the interchangeability is what I would be looking at, to put one at the last park, possibly then to use it to be a new machine for Mr. Doyle and take the one that he has, it only has four hundred and fifty hours, and put at Chestnut Ridge, buying as well a mower deck and a slip scoop. What this allows you is that, let's just say that you want to purchase one piece of equipment. I have multiple pieces in my repertoire. But let's just say the, uh, the trencher. A trencher could be held by the county and be used at any place, rather than going out and having to subcontract the work to put in a small, usually you can trench six inches. There's a cedar, there's an aerator, there is a blower. There is a multitude of equipment that could be held useful to each and every park, as well as Mr. Doyle at one, and I'm asking the same type of consideration, just that we put out a bid to see what it would cost, then for discussion as for purchase.
It was a good idea.
What I would only ask is that, usually when we do this, we put it on a work session and bring it here, because a couple of questions I would have is, is there a need? And two, with not having a park superintendent now, the new person may not want that, might want something else, and I don't know. So that, uh, that, that's my question about, um.
I will, I will ask, I would ask Mr. Doyle to speak if he would give up his Ventrac. Now, uh, as, as, running a park, I mean, you know, having association with parks, uh, it is the one piece of equipment that is either, that it's a great piece of equipment to have.
Cause it does all these different things.
Because it has multiple use facet, it's not just a mower, we're not talking, but yes, I, I purchased it because personally, it cut my mowing from twenty-four hours on my property to six and a half hours. So that's how efficient a machine it is just for that. It has the other uses, and we also could bring.
Well, it doesn't hurt to get bids on it, see what it will cost us. I'll, I'll make that motion, we'll just see if we get bids on it, plus.
A mower and a slip scoop.
I, I was gonna say, whatever items that, uh, Bobby believes would be good items to purchase at that time. Was that all right with you, Bob? You, you sort of figure out what you think would be good to bid in this? And, uh, do, you have, let's include a, uh, uh, opening date, too. Do you have an opening date there?
Do it on the twenty-seventh.
Do it at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so we.
Combined both motion.
Bids for May twenty, yeah, bids for, uh, to be open on May twenty-seventh, maybe.
I'll second that.
Been properly moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I vote no, but it passes two to one. Okay? Uh, proposed memorandum of agreement with Department of the Army.
This is what I've, uh, briefed, uh, y'all in the past before. This is our agreement, Corps of Engineer, uh, agreement we reached with the Corps of Engineers. The one, if you recall, that I've said many times, that when it was first proposed by Barry Palé, the UMR and myself, uh, we were told by so many people it would never happen. Here it is. It's done, it took two years, but we've got, we, we got it done, this is. This is, uh, well, it did actually, did take an act of Congress down there to, to authorize the Corps of Engineers to enter into this agreement. This puts, uh, the County, Montague County Commission, UMR, and, uh, the, uh, Department of the Army in a mutual, uh, aid agreement, where we, we together, uh, will provide pass-through funding services to keep the locks open on the river for, uh, at different times, based on the contribution. But this, this is the empowering document that allows us, uh, to do that, which some people said would never happen. So I would move that we approve the agreement.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes.
Yeah, we'll add that I did run this by Phil Magro, and he approved it as to form and also signed off as the, uh, certificate of authority.
Okay.
So I'll get all these signed later.
Any other new business? Reports from any elected officials? Your honor, mayor?
Gone a lot worse, I guess. Like make comment, that I'd like to ask a couple of questions, if that's, if that's possible. From listening to you guys on the recycling, uh, issues. I, I do know that, that the proposed extra transfer station is subject to PSC approval, of course, and that could take a whole, you know, it could take a lot to get that done. If, if memory serves me correctly, and I don't know, I'm searching my memory now. I think that was attempted before, and it was denied, because they felt that it wasn't, you know, whatever. And that was when the transfer station was out at Chitlak. And now that where it's at now, it's such a bigger and more efficient operation. I, I, I think that would actually diminish the chances for a second one, even, you know, even more so now. My question is, um, if you do list the property that the South, the Solid Waste Authority owns, is that going to include the truck that we now use and the dumpsters that we have?
No, no. Uh, and Solid Waste Authority doesn't own, the county owns it.
Yeah.
The grant funding, which we, which we allow the Solid Waste Authority to use.
It's really four items that we were looking at. Yeah, the three bail.
Three bailers and a conveyor.
Conveyor, yeah, those are the four we were looking at.
We've just spent ten thousand dollars on fencing.
Yes.
And I'd hate to.
No, no, we're not taking, we're taking anything. Matter of fact, if you, if you all have use for that over there, you can open up a full, uh, recycling center there in Westover, we'll be happy to donate it to the city, I know we can do that.
We can do that.
I know, I've been accused of losing my mind from time to time, but I'm not quite.
We haven't pushed you that far yet.
Not yet, my wife may think that, but I don't. But that was, uh, the interesting part of that is, also, that was my second question, is if, in fact, another transfer station is opened, is, are there gonna be a transfer station slash recycle center?
That's the question.
That would be the question, that would be the hope.
Because then, then, if you're gonna give them bailers and stuff like that to do that work with, then that means the product that they receive's gotta be separated.
Yes.
As far as I know, nobody's separating anything, except for what's going on with Marion County on the western end.
Western end, right.
So I just think those are some questions that you guys need to think about.
To answer his question, first of all, they have to get PSC approval to be a transfer station, and they can go try to get the recycling. That's, that's, that's what he said, there, there's two parts to this program.
Yeah.
Well, it would be helpful to have a local sorting facility like exists in Pittsburgh. I just don't know, uh, you know, that's the big, that's the big problem with transportation, like the southern part of West Virginia. You just, it costs so much money to ship the stuff, uh, unsorted. But I just don't believe that we are anywhere near a large enough market to provide a sorting facility closer to West Virginia and Pittsburgh.
Well, you know, the, the single string has destroyed the market.
Right.
Actually, it's helped us, it's helped the university, it's helped the city of Morgantown because of the, uh, curbside, uh, recycling that we offer and that we participate in. So that's, but, you know, the single string's just the way to go. Now, on the other end of that, obviously, was the downfall, or whatever you want to say, with the Solid Waste Authority. But, you know, we are, we are actively, uh, taking care of the recycling in the, in the city of Westover, obviously, but we've gone above and beyond, and when I get the fenceings up, but they didn't have the gates on them, they're hanging those today. So I'm gonna have a finished product next week, I'll bring some pictures of it.
Great.
You're welcome to drive by and look at that, because this is gonna free up our parking lot, so we can use.
Would that open up the hours a little bit longer? Do you know yet?
Possibly another hour at the most.
No, that would be fine, yeah.
Cause our guys, we go from seven to three-thirty because of our work schedule.
Okay.
And I'm not always there till four-thirty, sometimes I'm there till six, sometimes I leave before four-thirty, so I hate to, you know.
Okay.
Plus, we already paid a couple bucks for a couple signs, I hate to waste those signs, you know.
No, that's fine.
But it's working out pretty good, we still get, uh, called a lot of names.
Well, that's why I'd like you here next week, because I think that there's gonna be accumulation and the direction we're going, I think it'd be.
And we changed some of those dumpsters out, because we had to, we couldn't put the larger ones in.
Right.
And Jambi helped us yesterday with that.
Okay.
We went to Waitsdown, to Arnesville, and then the Solid Waste brought one down and took the larger one, so they, it fits in our gates better, and so it's gonna work out real nice for us. But, um, that's it.
And, and at Mason Dixon Park, there is, uh, bins now for voluntary contribution. For those who are in the western end of the county that wish to still contribute, uh, stop at Mason Dixon Park.
Very good, thank you.
I don't see any other. I don't see any other elected officials. Reports from county commissioners?
I have been meeting with the fire departments. I think I'm up to five fire departments. What we're discovering really is, funding is one issue, but the real, real problem is the lack of youth wishing to step up and volunteer. We have discovered, I have discovered, that the regulations that have been made of these fire departments for training are so onerous that they in no way encourage somebody to step up to volunteer, and that the average fire department thus interviewed so far has, on average, one new volunteer per year. Now, that's not a full statistic, but, you know, it's, that's a young, a young person coming in. So the population that is serving these departments is aging, and the recruits are not coming in. So something is either going to have to be done at the state level, whether we adjust some of these regulations. But you're, you're going, the volunteer fire departments are not going away yet, but they will go away if they don't have volunteers.
Okay. Thank you.
I really don't have anything, but I do want to comment on, has the Volunteer Fire Department Association ever given any thought? And maybe they do this already, but to run sort of, some sort of contest, something similar to our essay contest, which I was amazed, we, they had 90 essays, and what, 70 of them came from here? Yeah.
To my knowledge, the answer is no. I have been in attendance, I attended the last association meeting, but I can certainly bring that to their attention.
Yeah, and I think this commission would be very helpful in helping promote that, that idea of, of, like, a recognition and maybe an essay-type contest, or some sort of, why, why be a volunteer fireman type, type thing at a high school level?
Yes, would be good. That's, because that's usually the entry level, instead of coming out of high school, yes.
That's when they get started, and they either get into it or they don't.
Exactly.
That was my suggestion.
I shall bring that to them.
Okay.
That's all I have.
And as you just mentioned, it was in the paper, the three state winners for the essay contests were all from Montague County. The winner was from Mountain near Middle. Second place was...
St. Francis.
St. Francis, and third was Westwood. So congratulations to everyone. Again, it's, again, it says, I believe that our younger community is starting to really understand.
Are they going to come up here and make a presentation?
Oh, okay.
They'll, they'll come up.
Oh, okay, good. But I want, yeah, congratulate, I saw in the paper. The other thing is a question that I didn't know how to answer, and Eldon, I know you hadn't been here, but what I would like to ask, and I don't know if we have to send a letter. The question has been brought up to me several times by people saying, why hasn't the road been open to the airport access road when it's been completed for several weeks?
They're still working on that. I saw, I saw construction on the berms right now, so there's still construction.
The, the top.
Is...
They, they, they put a final, what do they call it?
It's a finish.
Finish coat, thank you.
Okay.
Finish, finish coat that goes on. It can only be done once all the, all the berms, drains, everything is. Once the finish coat is put down, then it can take traffic.
Okay, well, that's fine. I didn't know how to...
It's not completed, and you can't put the finish coat down until you've had, what, six weeks of above 60-degree weather, or something like that.
We might.
Five weeks.
We might not be so hot.
Four weeks above, well, I...
Yeah, now I understand.
It, it will probably, it'll probably be mid-May.
Well, thank you. I didn't know how to, I don't...
But that's why the weather's been the problem.
Okay, good. I don't, if, if it's possible, I know we want to go in the executive session, but Judge Gazeau is here. Is there a way that we can? Yeah, could we just deal, is that okay? But since it's the only item before lunch, if the judge has a mind, we can start.
We had, we had an executive session scheduled that we were going to do. Do you want us to do the executive session?
Or we can do your...
And then just sit and...
Just whatever you care to do. I'm good.
You're, you're fine?
Yeah.
Why don't we go ahead and finish the meeting then?
Okay.
And if you don't mind, and then, then we'll get together right after the executive session.
There...
I move we go into executive session.
At 6-98-4, section nine.
Yes.
Section nine?
Yes.
Okay, it's been properly moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session at this time for compliments.
All right, I'm moved.
Okay.
I'm moved we come out of executive session.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're out of executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved to adjourn.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's it. We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.